Great, well, thank you, first of all, for this special meeting and coming to this special meeting. I wanted to get this draft report in front of the Transportation Advisory Committee as soon as we could, and I'm leaving for vacation, so I'm going to be missing the meeting on the 18th. So it was important to me that I would be here for this meeting so that we could hear, I could hear what you had to say and what your thoughts were. We're not really asking you for a decision tonight. We just want to get this information out there in the most public way we thought we could do that. So we're recording tonight's meeting, and it'll be available online. We also sent the report to, I don't remember how many, quite a few people that had actually signed up during the concept plan for the corridor. So we've got a great, this is the best turnout, I think, we've had. So thank you all for coming to this meeting, for our TAC meeting. So the idea tonight would be for our consultant team to present some of the work that they've been working on. And like I said, it's still a draft plan. Our intent is to get before the City Commission in April. So I'd like to have it presented, discussion as it may ensue. We could hear from the public, we could hear from each of you, but then really kind of a period of contemplation. And the idea would be to come back at our next regular meeting in March, regular TAC meeting in March, hear more kind of officially with hopefully some buy-in from the Transportation Advisory Committee that this report is something that you approve, and the next piece would be to take it before the City Commission and hopefully have this incorporated into the overall concept plan. So that's why we're here tonight. So with that, Dave, you want to, you and Nate want to take over?
Sure.
And introduce yourselves and who you're with.
Okay. My name's Dave Brokaw. I'm with Wallace Engineering.
Nate Schroeder with DKAS Associates.
Okay. So just to give a little background on what we've done, obviously, we've come before the TAC before to discuss the corridor plan. And as part of the corridor plan, we were tasked by the city to look into developing a roundabout option for the Warner-Parratt-Lynn Avenue-Leland intersection. As part of that, some issues came to light through the corridor development that in discussions with the city that were determined that we needed to take a broader look at the selection process for this, for the roundabout, or whatever intersection we wanted to put here. So we went through what was called an intersection control analysis, and we looked at a number of options to determine, you know, what were the pros and cons, in essence, of a variety of options to address some of the deficiencies of this intersection with regard to capacity and safety and other issues that associate with, you know, the roundabout design. So we looked at five different options plus a no-build option. The two options involving closing the left turn movement from Central Point onto Warner-Parratt and either having a U-turn at the signal or no U-turn at the signal. One option was two traffic signals, one at Central Point and one at Lynn Avenue, and trying to combine that into a singular, signalized, you know, larger intersection, and then also our two roundabout options. Nate was the, he did a lot of the analysis for this analysis, and I'm going to let him talk about the process that he went through to kind of come to some of the determinations that we have here, so.
So what we did to begin with was take a look at what work had been done previously, which was very little in terms of a comprehensive evaluation of both intersections together. The TSP did evaluate Central Point and Warner-Parratt as a study intersection. It did not include Lynn, Leland, Warner-Milling. So we went out and collected some new counts and looked at those, compared those to what was in the TSP, and verified that the future volumes were appropriate to use for the analysis, as part of this analysis to compare the alternatives. So once we, once we had the future volumes figured out, we looked at a couple of different, we compared these on a couple of different things: operations, construction cost, safety, system context, access, and right-of-way. And so we just stepped through each of those alternatives and basically just compared, you know, looked at them and compared them side by side, trying to get as equal a comparison as we could. I'll start with system context because what we discovered is, through the evaluation process, is that system context is not really a determining factor when comparing the alternatives to each other. When we're looking at system context, we're considering things like the roadway network, bicycles, peds, transit, adjacent intersection control types. And for all of the alternatives, we can accommodate bikes and peds, transit, and, you know, and there are no signals nearby, and there are no roundabouts nearby. So we kind of used that, you know, we looked at it, we've documented it in here. It doesn't really help us make a decision as to which alternative is the preferred. When developing the traffic volumes, we also had to consider if we get rid of that left turn out of Central Point, where are those vehicles going to go? It's a fairly small number of vehicles. It's 55 in the PM peak, but we did account for that in the different alternatives. You can see that in the figures where we show which volume set we use for each alternative and how we rerouted those trips. The assumption being that maybe some of the vehicles coming out of that, those neighborhoods, might reroute to other streets like Leland or, you know, use Pointon and some other alternative routes and approach the intersection differently. So all of those different volumes are in here. And then really, what it comes down to is after, you know, we go through the alternatives evaluation, we looked at mobility standards as the first thing that we look at. And what we discovered is, no surprise, in the future, no build. The traffic signal meets mobility standards, but Central Point, Warner-Parratt does not. The left turn out of there creates, the VC is over one, the mobility standard we're shooting for is .99. So there would be a lot of queues on that, on that approach and excessive delays. If either of the options that get rid of that left turn out address the operations and mobility issues at Central Point, Warner-Parratt, and the signal, they have very little effect on the operations of the signal. So you'll see in the summary table, it's probably the easiest place to look, it's kind of got everything together. You can see the VC ratio that we're looking at at each intersection, kind of side by side there. With the alternative three, which is both signalized, is intersection signalized, we very quickly discovered that the intersection goes, the VC goes over one. It's very difficult with the proximity of those intersections to have a signal that would work and not have a lot of queuing in between the intersections, and it's a very inefficient way to operate the intersection. So once we determined that that VC was going to go over one, we didn't really consider that alternative any further. And then the four-leg roundabout and the five-leg roundabout are consistent with what we found as part of the corridor plan, and those VCs are well within the mobility standards, so.
So as part of this, I mean, what we tried to boil this down to was to come up with a unified, you know, how to compare apples to apples with this. So in the summary table, it addresses, you know, some of these issues, the VC, the construction costs, the safety, and then how it fits into the system. But I think, you know, the other way we tried to look at this, and this has a larger discussion of some of the specific elements, we also went and did a present worth analysis, taking some of these issues and trying to apply cost to them. Now, we've gone through and done cost estimates for all the various alternatives, and we've, you know, evaluated that. There are some equations that we can use to put cost to delay, put cost to crash data. We have maintenance costs from the city that, for another roundabout, for landscaping and what they pay for that, and also for the signal maintenance. So we took those costs and attributed those, and then, you know, built it over, you know, a 20-year period at an assumed interest rate, and then that came back with a cost for each particular option that we looked at. Now, doing that, some of these costs are quantifiable, you know. The delay costs we based, and we tried to be somewhat conservative on the delay costs, and only analyzed the PM peak hour. So it didn't account for any costs in the morning, morning delays or any other delays during the day. We only put a cost to delays that we calculated for the various options at that PM peak hour. The construction costs are from our estimates of the various improvements. The crash savings are based on assumptions from, you know, other roundabouts or signals or options and ways to either reduce crashes or to reduce the severity of crashes. Higher severity crashes have higher costs, and those are factored into this. The maintenance costs, as we talked, came from the city. Now, that comes up with a number, and it's in the present worth analysis at the back. But what we feel is important to discuss as part of this is there are some costs that are not quantifiable, at least not without a large degree of effort, that we don't feel is warranted at this point. First and foremost, there's an opportunity cost. Clearly, the roundabout options are going to have a higher capital cost that will be outlined at the very beginning, as opposed to some of the signalized changes have very small construction costs. So that money may or may not be wisely spent as part of this. At this point in time, you may have another option that you might want to choose to spend that money. As part of the, so the present worth analysis points to option five, which is the five-leg roundabout, as the most cost-effective option over a 20-year span of time, when factoring in all these delay costs and construction costs and crash savings. But the non-quantifiable costs are what we wanted to present to you to make you start thinking about whether or not that option is the best choice for the city. So yeah, opportunity cost is something that needs to be factored in. There's costs associated with construction delay that we have not calculated. So the higher construction costs, in essence, is going to be similar construction delay associated with, you know, street closures and detours and whatever happens during construction that may, you know, cause delays to the motoring public. There are also impacts to private businesses that are not quantified in this analysis that need to be considered. Certainly, the property on the corner, the church, basically, the three properties that front this intersection that have businesses will be impacted by the construction, and that needs to be considered. But a cost was not allocated to that in this analysis. And then also, the city's acquired property on the northwest corner. The two roundabout options impinge into that property, and it's unclear whether or not, you know, that's a cost to the city, you know, taking that right-of-way away from another use that the city might find for. So those are the kind of things that we looked at in developing this analysis. And so I'd like to just hand it over to you to ask questions, if you have any questions on what we put together here, or thoughts to try and, you know, eventually, we'd like to come to a determination on which direction the city should go here.
Well, then, let me frame it a little bit more for the, so basically, the conclusion is, from the cost analysis, information, all this analysis, when in there is the, five-legged roundabout is still the, it's a costly improvement, but it's long-term, determined to be the most cost, provide the most cost benefit. And we think, based on the analysis that we provided, that makes sense. So if, I think if we had to make the decision today and make the recommendation to the City Commission without a conversation with the TAC, that would be our recommendation. We're not planning on building this today. That's, I think, another piece. This is really just to kind of, this was to get us further along with the concept and to provide more documentation that the roundabout is a viable option that meets a lot of concerns that came up when we were talking about the concept plan without all these analysis. So we've done that effort as well, using the work that DKAS has done. So for tonight, it's kind of open discussion about whether you think we're on the right track for some of these, some of this analysis that we've done, whether present worth analysis for a 20-year life for a roundabout is enough, or should it be longer? The cost for delays, we've been fairly conservative with the cost, and that's kind of like a, that's an odd thing to come up with, but there is a industry standard for how you come up with cost for delay. But, you know, if it's a two-minute delay for every vehicle that goes through that intersection during peak hour, then, you know, there's a cost associated with those, just like when you're in, you know, another, you know, bumper-to-bumper traffic on I-205. There's a cost associated with that. So those are, those are factors that we've included in there, and we're, again, just wanting to present that and give you something to think about, and to the degree you feel comfortable talking about it. I don't know how many of you, maybe that would be good to know, is how many of you had a chance to actually get through the draft before today's meeting? Okay. So some of, for some of you, it's new, which is fine. And then the other reason was to provide the public an opportunity to share some of their thoughts and concerns and.
Okay, well, let's start with commission, committee questions or comments. John?
Thank you. For the listening audience, both here and on television, I guess, maybe you could describe what the construction costs were for each of the four you finally evaluated on the alternatives, or include the no-build. And then, because the cost is so dramatically different between option one and two, and four and five, it seems like 20 years would be lucky to bridge that gap in terms of that construction cost, so maybe a little more explanation on that.
Sure. So the construction costs for the options, option one being modifications to close Central Point, left turn movement out of Central Point onto Warner-Parratt, and then modify the signal to allow U-turns at that. The construction cost for that was, came out to be $115,000. Option two, which is the same closure at Central Point for left turns moving onto Warner-Parratt, but no modification of the signal and no allowances for U-turns, was $45,000. We'll skip option three because that, and then the four-leg roundabout was 3.2 million, and the five-leg roundabout was 3.3 million.
Maybe you could help us how you computed the cost over 20 years so that that difference in construction was negated and became beneficial to have the most expensive project?
Sure. The, starting with the delay cost. Now, delay costs, they add up.
This is delay of vehicles?
This is delay of vehicles.
Okay.
This is all, yeah, all related to the delay of vehicles. There are some studies, and Nate's got some references that he pulled out, that attribute a cost per vehicle based on the time that they spend waiting. And it actually, it adds up quite significantly. So looking at the delay costs for the options that we have, and this is just looking at the specific one-hour PM peak delay, in the no-bid option, we're looking at $316,000 annual cost.
Is that on that summary sheet?
It is on the present worth analysis sheet. Is it on the summary sheet?
It's on the summary sheet as well. It's in the.
Can you point out the column and row, please?
So it's under Traffic Operations Annual Weekday PM Peak Hour Cost, so the fourth column in has the, that delay cost in there. And in the present worth analysis, it's the first column.
The colored columns were, right?
Yeah. So you're looking at this one, this is the present worth analysis?
Okay.
Can we pull that up?
There, sorry.
Can we pull that up?
Is it, yeah, is it possible to get it up on the screen? For option one, that delay cost was $279,000 per year. For option two is $254,000 per year. And then for the four-leg roundabout was $98,000 per year, and the five-leg was $92,000 per year. So over 20-year period, and the other thing with the present worth analysis is you need to make some assumptions. We assumed a 4% interest rate, that may be low, may be high. We assumed a 20-year design life, which is, as John said, probably low. So, I mean, if we're going to build this thing, it's going to last longer than 20 years, for sure. So, but we wanted to kind of come up with an analysis, so those were the assumptions that we made. When it comes to crash savings, those costs are, there's costs associated, basically, within the report, we pulled numbers for property damage only, crashes are 7,400 per instance, injury crashes are 79,000, and fatal crashes are 4 million, for instance. We took some data for various other applications of this type of intersection, you know, and assuming that the severity of crashes decreases with roundabouts, and, you know, various other assumptions, we came up with a cost per year for crash savings for these intersections. Now, we looked at the crash data that was available for that intersection as part of the corridor analysis, and I believe, I don't know how many we had in there exactly, but some 16, 18 crashes in that particular intersection over the last, was it five years?
Yeah, it was 11 total at Central Point, Warner-Parratt, and 16 total at Warner-Parratt, Warner-Milling, Lynn and Leland, so.
What's that cost? Would you guys figure out that the cost of those crashes were?
I mean, you're saying it's savings of, you know, $18,000, $18, $19,000. What are you comparing it to?
To no-build.
No, no, I mean, like, what is that no-build? What's the cost of the crashes?
So in essence, the cost of the crashes is those 27 crashes.
In dollar figures.
I don't know, the specific.
We don't have that in here.
How you're saying it's $18,000?
That's the expected savings over what was out there today, because we're going to get rid, if we eliminate the left turn out of Central Point, there are several, there are several collisions that are attributed to that movement. So what we did, we said, okay, if that movement goes away in alternative two, we can expect to see a savings because that type of collision, that number of collision per year is going to go away, and that's where you, that's where you get the $18,000. And then with the roundabouts, we would expect to see a reduction based on research that's been done in the severity of the collision. So we take injury collisions, and they become property damage only collisions, and there's a certain percentage that they see, you know, 72 to 80% reduction in those. And so we apply that to the number of injury collisions that we have, and we say those are going to become property damage only, and that's a savings each year, and that's what helps us get to these numbers for the alternatives four and five.
Okay.
Did you take into account those outlying areas outside the city that are going to build out eventually, increased traffic volume and increased residential?
Yes, those are, those are included in the future 2035 volumes that are taken from the TSP, which accounts for those.
Okay.
Yeah.
Essentially, what you're after really is the most efficient movement of traffic possible under the circumstances, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Did you get, take into account a larger roundabout? If it increased 10%, do you get more efficiency? If it increased land area 25%, do you get more efficiency in the movement of traffic? Because that's essentially what you're talking about, the safe, efficient movement of traffic.
We didn't, we didn't look at, like, varying the size of the roundabout. We went with the previous designs that we had. I mean, you could spend hours and hours and days, you know, looking at alternatives. So we took the options that we had for the roundabout and assumed that that was what we would go forward with. So, but I understand what you're saying, that certainly, maybe there might be more efficient roundabout alternatives within, like, changing of the diameter of the roundabout. What we went with, with the designs that are included was a recommended diameter of roundabout from the guidance. Now, and that varies, plus or minus, you know, 10, 20, 20 feet diameter, depending on, you know, all options. But that's something that, as you go through the design, we certainly will look at in greater detail.
I think you've got it. I think you absolutely have to. We're looking 25, 35 years down the road with increased traffic volume on a roundabout that I don't think, in my judgment, is big enough. It's big enough. I think you're going to find that you've got a demand for movement of traffic that's going to exceed the radius of that, of that roundabout.
The roundabout that's designed currently, that's in the plan, certainly has enough capacity for our projections. And it's designed to meet, you know, it provides for access for all manner of vehicles and trucks, and so I'm fairly confident that the design that's in there will be satisfactory, but that's not to say there might be a better choice of radius. So, you know, as we go forward with this, certainly, that's something that the designers of the roundabout will look at.
Well, let me ask you a question. If that roundabout was larger in design, would it mean a more efficient use of traffic volume?
Maybe. Maybe, maybe not. It depends. Not necessarily.
Just because it's larger doesn't mean it's going to be more efficient.
Well, the problem with making it larger is because you've got five legs to it. Well, one of the problems with making it larger, because it has five legs, as you make it larger, you know, sometimes those legs don't work as well as they did before. You know, there's lots of things to look at. And then also, certainly, right-of-way issues and access issues. The cost of the roundabout increases potentially dramatically as you increase the size of the roundabout. There's other, you know, factors that we need to consider as we, as we design this.
I just think this is such an important hub that if we don't get it right this time, then we're going to be living with that thing for a long time.
I agree. I think it's also important to note that when the roundabout gets bigger, you end up with more safety concerns, because once I make it bigger, now vehicles can travel faster. Part of the, part of what makes modern roundabouts so efficient is that everybody's going at slow speeds, but they're not slowing down. Vehicles can get it, the speed differential between someone entering and circulating is pretty small. If I make it bigger, the people going around it can go a lot faster, and now I can't get in, and I might see some safety, you know, concerns with that.
I was in one over in Ireland, and it was, it was a, it was a big boy. It really was. And people were going 55, 60 in the roundabout. You know, you don't, you don't expect that to happen.
Right.
I see the problems you're having here.
I think the key point there is, is that we're trying to balance property availability and impacts with safe movement of vehicles, safe movement of pedestrians. You know, the bigger the roundabout, the longer distance the pedestrians got to cross. So, you know, I mean, but those details, landscaping, those kind of things, those come later. Right now, we're just really trying to kind of reach some level of consensus. We know we're not going to get 100% consensus, but some level of consensus that we're on the track, with the right track with regard to a recommendation. And right now, the recommendation remains the five-legged roundabout. And what's important to me is that, you know, this study reflects what the community, in particular, the Transportation Advisory Committee, feels is the right measures and the right approach to determining that, because, you know, there's lots of subjective inputs on these kinds of decisions. And we're trying to keep that within kind of an industry standard. We're trying to, you know, be as forthright as we can about that and still land on a, on a result that we can move forward with and plan for.
Well, I can see from alternative number one and number two that there wouldn't really be much of an improvement in the intersections. In fact, alternative number one states there could be a decrease in safety. And I can see that putting that U-turn in there would add to confusion, so I don't think that either one of those are very viable option. Number five, the last roundabout that you put down here, I'm concerned about infringing on some property there on the mini mall. I've listened to the owner of that property before and other meetings, and she's quite adamant that she is going to fight like crazy to not lose any more of her property there. I do see a little bit of an option on that last, number five, is moving the roundabout slightly to the northwest, and that would eliminate taking any of that property away from the mini mall.
And.
And then I think, I don't know, that we're here, that we're there quite yet in this meeting, but I'd be very interested in finding out where all that money's going to come from. That's a lot of money. That's a lot of money.
Does anybody else have any?
I have a couple.
Go ahead.
Well, the first one I have is a kind of picky uni-type thing, but on the off-chance that we're stuck with what we've got for a fair period of time, under the transit facilities on, on existing, the existing evaluation, I think it ought to be noted that that corner from Warner Mil, yeah, Warner Milney onto Lynn Avenue, has an exceedingly large radius, curb radius to it, so the buses can make the turn from lane to lane without infringing on the traffic going the other way. I know for a fact it's fifty-two feet, because I was, I was, my first assignment was to build this intersection.
So, you're the one to blame.
I'm the one to blame. You can blame me, but, but if we're stuck with it, I think it should be recognized that because the buses can make that turn easily, that we're not stacking traffic up behind them, waiting to get around that corner today. So, there's, that's not a typical right turn for the buses. And also, I don't think it's appropriate for this evaluation, but at a future time, when something is more definite, I think we should have a paragraph in here someplace that says we need to evaluate the access in, into and out of that mall that we were talking about here, the Savage Mall, because they have accesses off of Central Point and off of Leland, and they're really close to where that intersection is today. And if we move that into the property, any at all, that's going to be an unviable access point, at least off of Central Point, and that needs some evaluation prior to, you know, committing to a design, but I don't think it should be part of this.
That's understood. No, I, the accesses to the mini mall are something that we've certainly talked quite a bit about, and we've looked into, and it's going to take a lot more effort in the design phase to make sure that, you know, we can provide, you know, in and outs and meet their needs, certainly.
Yeah, I just don't, I just want it to be noted someplace, so it doesn't get forgotten and overlooked fifteen years from now.
I don't think there's a possibility of it being forgotten.
I wonder with the elimination of the, and I don't know how many parking stalls are you're taking at the alternative five, it seems like at least six, seven? How does that fit into the, into their, you know, like, parking counts and requirements? Is that even viable for them anymore?
I didn't think we were taking parking.
I mean, at least here, it shows on this alternative five. It's going over these stretching lines or something with the pedestrian.
It looks like three or four of the spaces are impacted over on the Leland roadside.
There's, yeah, there, I mean, again, that's detailed analysis, but I don't, you know, the intent would be no parking impact there to the degree we can, so we're trying to minimize those.
Is there any computer-generated information to give you a, a result in terms of how much improvement in terms of efficiency this roundabout would be over signalization? Is it ten percent more efficient? Do you have a computer model or anything like that?
Yeah, and there's, there's models within the appendices. There's a Sidra model for the, that was, that Nate did for the roundabouts that calculate what the delays are. I'll let you talk about the other signalized intersection.
Right, so it's similar to the roundabouts. We use a program called Syncro to do the same thing for the signalized options, and it looks at, you know, kind of what kind of delays we would expect to see, what the VC ratios are and how they compare, and so, we can see, you know, at least based on the volumes that we're expecting and the lane configurations that we've assumed, what, what the operations of the signalized intersections would be compared to the roundabouts. And we, and it's significantly less for the, the operations are much better with the roundabout than they are with the signal, if you don't add any capacity or make any changes to the signal from what it is today, if you don't add any lanes to it or change any of that, you know.
Well, you just hit on a key thing. If you don't add any capacity, how are you going to keep from adding capacity in a growing city?
At some point, you would have to. With the signal, it's not going to last forever either. We don't know what time, you know, that could be twenty-thirty-five, could be twenty-forty-five, we don't know. Based on the horizon year that we were looking at, it's kind of, we cap things at twenty-thirty-five. So, we compare, and we compare all the alternatives to each other, you know, using that, the software programs.
Scott?
As a highway designer, you know, those four, first, those first four options really don't do the right thing, but I really do like alternative five. I know it's a schematic, having drawn up many of these in my life, and it'll do better design work later. And the biggest thing I, question I have is, have you looked into water quality costs? Because that can be upwards of a million dollars, so I was wondering if that's been looked at.
I believe we did have water quality, stormwater facilities and landscaping costs in here in the estimate.
Okay, good, because that's the biggest cost I find right now. Looks good to me.
Will a fifty-foot truck trailer have any trouble getting around there?
No, you drive on it.
This should accommodate a large truck. Typically, a roundabout will include a truck apron on the inside that allows the rear wheels of the truck to negotiate the diameter.
That would also may be part of the access into the mall, because they get fifty-foot deliveries.
That's something that certainly will need to be evaluated, getting their trucks in and doing deliveries.
Any other, yes?
I think when we had an earlier hearing at the school there by the, about this project, there was some discussion about two lanes in a roundabout versus one lane, and whether or not that adds complications and increases accidents, because people are changing lanes on the two lanes instead of one lane in the roundabout.
The two-lane is certainly more complicated and does have more crash issues than a one-lane. A single-lane roundabout is generally much simpler for people to negotiate, but it does not have the capacity that we were looking for, for this intersection. Based on the analysis that we've done, multi-lane roundabout was warranted.
Would the two-lane roundabout work between Central Point and Leland, Warner Milney, when a good share of the movement is off of Central Point is going down Lynn Avenue?
Well, I have another understanding.
Well, if I'm, if I'm making, if I'm coming from Central Point, going down, to go down Lynn Avenue, to go around the roundabout, I got to, I would have to make a right turn into the right lane and then immediately get in the left lane around there to be able to get off. And I've got two intersections to go through before I get to Lynn Avenue, so I'm wondering about the crisscross traffic for people wanting to make opposite movements, if there's enough room for those.
Yeah, in the five-leg roundabout, it really becomes one intersection, so you don't, you're not going from one over to another intersection, it's really all just kind of becomes one bigger intersection.
Pretty much need one lane to get through there.
Right, and that, and that's where during detailed design, we would focus a lot on striping, signing, making sure that, you know, adding guide signs for people so that they know exactly as they're approaching which lane they need to be in and how they would get to where they want to go, yeah.
Can you, I'm trying to think, the Stafford roundabout, is that, are we, are you familiar with that one, Nate?
A little bit.
So, I'm just, I'm trying to, I mean, that's similar in, maybe bigger in diameter, but it's similar in lane configuration, where, you know, people are maneuvering through that, and you do need to pay attention to the signs as you come into the approach, because if you're paying attention to those signs as you approach the roundabout, you're in the right lane, and you get to where you need to go with very little, so.
Like I wasn't.
Which you weren't, yeah. So, you know, I mean, as, as we become more and more familiar with roundabouts, I think they're, they're definitely manageable and relatively efficient. Again, I don't know what the problems have been at that particular roundabout, but there's probably others that are pretty similar.
Well, that Stafford one, I traveled quite frequently before I retired, and it's similar to this, the signage is the real key there, both roadside signage and on the pavement itself, but that, when they made that roundabout there, that was such a wonderful improvement. It was just incredible. The traffic moves so much smoother there, but again, it takes people getting used to that change, but it really works well.
Any other committee? Yes, John?
Dave, when you made your introduction, you talked about opportunity costs, because up front, four and five are huge projects, very expensive, and so, I guess, opportunity cost question would be is, could you build a lot better bikeways and sidewalks up in the full length of this, if you weren't spending all your money on the intersection? Or maybe that's a forced choice or a false choice, but I don't know, maybe there's some other projects where you could, three one-million-dollar projects would garner a lot more benefit than putting it all in this one spot. So, I'm just trying to ask that question.
Well, I think that's why we've included that. It's something that we're going to need to consider as well, but the other thing to mention is in the transportation system plan, you know, and it's always been our contention that we're not talking about building this thing tomorrow. There's a lot of evaluation that could go into other projects. In fact, the TSP prioritized projects by short, medium, and long term, and funded and unfunded projects. And so, this is one of those projects, in my recollection, it's unfunded, and it's medium to long term. So, again, we're trying to get a plan in place so that we can move towards the future with some confidence that we're going to be able to implement. And so, if it's property acquisition, if it's funding, applying for grants, those kind of things, we have those, we have this plan to essentially, you know, utilize as we move into the future. And maybe that's next year, when there's the perfect grant opportunity, that this really fits right into that slot nicely, or maybe it's fifteen years from now, when finally, you know, there's a new opportunity for some grant funding that would facilitate this. We don't have a timeline on this. We're really trying to get to, again, an approval of that corridor plan that includes a solution for this, for this roundabout that looks long-term. Really, it looks for that build-out condition that would never, you know, from what I understand, based on the numbers, this isn't a solution that's ever going to have to be redone, based on our ability to grow out in that area. There are limitations on our ability to grow out in the South End and Central Point corridor, so, you know, this solution is a long-term solution. And again, gives us something that we can have some certainty on, that that's the plan. That's, that's where we're going with that. Maybe next year, maybe more likely, maybe not fifteen, but maybe more like seven, how about that?
The medium was five to ten years.
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
And it's certainly a lot easier to get a grant if you have a plan.
Okay, at this point, then, I think we'll move on to citizen comments. I have two, two people that wish to speak, Bruce Martin and Alice Hayden. Please come up to the table, and we'll limit you, as in all other meetings, to three minutes, so please try to keep within that three minutes. And I'm, I'm from the old school, so I'll say ladies first.
Thank you. I'm Alice Hayden, and I live in Oregon City, and I live off of Central Point, and I've lived there for just over eleven years, so I use this intersection all the time. I'm a patient person, so I don't have any trouble with the lights there, and I don't put any value on my wait time there, because I have a light that allows me to go through the intersection. But my really, real concern is with the pedestrians at that intersection. I saw that, that the fifth idea here allows for some activated flashing yellow lights for pedestrians. It doesn't give them a green light and a stop for the traffic, and that's what's there now. The convenience mall there, the convenience store in the little mall there, does a heavy traffic. It's a pickup point at the old Mount Pleasant School. There's a pickup point for the grade schools. There's a middle school within walking distance. There is a food pantry on the other corner at the church there, and there are a lot of walkers at those intersections, and I have a real concern for them not having a green light to cross safely. That's my concern.
Okay, thank you. Bruce?
Bruce Martin, citizen here in Oregon City for the last eighteen years. I'm the pastor at the Presbyterian Church. I don't speak for the church in these comments, but I think they reflect what I've been hearing and I'm concerned about. First, thank you for notifying us by telephone. Really appreciate the effort that was made to invite us to come. Also, for posting the PDF online was really helpful. I got to review most of it. And for doing the study that we just heard about, I really appreciate that, too. Moving away from the corner commercial property that Betty Savage has with the corner there, and moving it northwest, if you're talking about number five in the roundabout, then puts more pressure on the church's property, estimated seven thousand square feet. Looks like most of it would be the church's land on that corner, because it moves in that direction. And I just wanted to make you aware that it stops, or the, the option that the city would take on that property to hold it, prevents us from expanding parking out towards Lynn Avenue, which is the only logical direction we can go, because the buildings aren't set up to accommodate entrance, especially for the elderly to.
Can I interrupt just a minute? I think the, the church property is actually, isn't that to the northeast?
If you're gonna, if you move it north and west, you're actually, we're, we're at the northwest corner, aren't we?
Northeast.
Northeast corner? Okay, excuse me. Yeah, okay, sorry. I've only lived here eighteen years, I got to get my compass up. My apologies. But when I looked at the circular drawing, you know, the, the general impression, not the exactitude of it, it looked like our land is the one that it sits on the heaviest, at least at this point. And I just wanted to say that our parking would go towards Lynn if we could expand it, and this could really create some confusion or delay for us as well, for what our needs are. Just hoping maybe it could be shifted more towards Mount Pleasant. Also, I mentioned in worship on Sunday, and I had some seniors respond, that they would try and avoid that intersection, and I have to say, my mother is one of those that has a roundabout in her area, and she's a point-and-shoot. She, her neck just doesn't turn, she can't process fast enough, coming out of Costco is a nightmare. I don't like riding with her. I give an anecdotal comment, just for that purpose. And then, I also go through that intersection quite a bit. I'm a roundabout enthusiast. I think the one thing that I'd like to point out briefly is that if the roundabout number five is the option of choice, which is apparently listed in the report, just to be aware that the church has one of the largest food pantries, weddings, funerals, we're already, capacity parking-wise, we're short, and we would love to expand our usage in the community with more parking, and we're just hoping and praying that the roundabout doesn't interfere with that desire and that need that we have as well, and I just wanted to make that awareness for you.
Okay, and thank you for making it available as a TriMet parking spot.
Oh, and last point. When you do turn left even now off of Lynn onto Warner Milney, there's a bus stop almost immediately on the right. Every time a bus stops there, you cannot get through that intersection, but maybe two cars. And I've found personally, that's probably the biggest problem I have in the whole thing right now. But yeah, you're welcome, we're glad to have it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next would be Betty Savage and Joseph Merrick. Okay, Betty, why don't you go ahead?
My name is Betty Savage. I'm the owner of the Savage Mini Mall on the corner there. I have several different things that came up during this whole thing, and the first one is that when we built the mall, my husband and I, we built it to last forever, for a long time. We intended it, as you can see by the construction, to look that way, too, said the end. We planned to leave it to our children. It was our income, it's my income now, and we planned to leave it to our children and our grandchildren. Right now, I'm having a problem even leasing the empty space I have, because people have heard about this roundabout. And the agency that I talked to just a couple days ago told me, do you have any idea what kind of approaches they're going to have? Because people are asking me that. And I says, no, not now, I don't. I said, they haven't decided what's going to be done yet. He said, well, I can't lease it, because a lot of the questions I'm getting is in regards to that roundabout. to that roundabout. So I'm stuck now with another vacancy. I already lost the tenant before, because she got panicky about the fact that, well, you're not going to have enough parking for me, and, and then I'm not going to be able to get clients in here either. So I thought, okay, that's where my business is going. Now, if you do the Central Point, anything to the Central Point approach, that's our main approach for our big trucks to come in, to deliveries. They now make it okay, but if you do anything at all to them, they're going to have a hard time getting in there. And like I said, they use that one mainly because it's the easiest one to get in, rather than the one on Leland. Uh, we also are concerned in regards to, um, having, having you say that, and I say that you say that you're going to have to take some of my parking spaces. I went through this a long time ago, as you know.
I do.
And so therefore, I don't intend, and I'll repeat myself for the third time, and I'm sorry to say that I have to do that, I'm not going to give one inch, nor one foot of the property. If you take any more of my property, as far as that parking spaces are concerned, I don't have the legal rights for my business as far as the business itself, size-wise, because it said, and a long time ago, they told me, you have to have, if you're going to open this business, Mrs. Savage, this amount of parking spaces, or we don't let you open it. So you see where I'm standing?
Betty, I have a question about the trucks. My memory says they come in off of Central Point, circle around, come out on Leland, and head back toward that intersection. Am I right?
No, they come from Warner Milne, mainly, because they like to come up Malala Avenue.
Right.
And then they also come up Lynn Avenue, and that's basically where they come from.
And, but they come in off of Central Point onto the, into the.
Onto that approach, yes.
And they come out onto Leland, and then they turn to the left and go back into that intersection?
Go back into, generally, they'll go back to Warner Milne and get back on the Malala.
Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph?
Um, good evening, Chair, Vice Chair. Uh, my name's Joseph Merrick. I live at, uh, 1005 Clearbrook Drive in Oregon City, and I actually have a couple hats. Um, I'm a resident of Oregon City, I'm the President of Oregon City Trail Alliance, I'm the Traffic Engineer for Clackamas County, and I'm the Director of Clackamas Safe Communities, which is a program focused on reducing injuries and fatalities, so just to get that out of the way. But I'm here speaking as myself. So first of all, thanks for, uh, to the city for taking this on and looking at the Leland Corridor and looking at solutions to, uh, this intersection. I would term these intersections as functionally obsolete, um, it's time for a change, um, they are congested. Uh, I travel that intersection, everything from a horse trailer and pickup to a car, motorcycle, bicycle, three-wheeled human-powered vehicle, and walking. And by far, walking is the most perilous thing that I do crossing that intersection, trying to cross Central Point, and even trying to cross at the signal because of right turners. And so the, um, roundabout, I'm very supportive of, the five-legged roundabout, um, the county has built a number of roundabouts under my watch, which I have promoted. We have found them to be tremendously safe, uh, substantially reducing fatal, well, fatal and serious injury crashes. And the beauty of the roundabouts, once they're built, if there are crashes in the roundabout, they tend to be, be low speed, everybody's going the same direction, and with the advancements in design, pedestrians and bicycles are handled, they're handled good. Bicycles can be, well, bicycles have a choice to circulate with the vehicles or act like a pedestrian and use the crossings as a pedestrian. And so, um, from my perspective, particularly as a pedestrian, I'd much rather have a roundabout there than the current configuration. Um, a couple of comments that were also made about options and limiting left turns onto, uh, Warner, Warner Parrot, and what'll happen with that is people will dribble through the neighborhoods, and so I also walk in those neighborhoods, so I know that somebody that's coming out of the neighborhood, they're probably not going to go over to Partlow, they're going to go over to Boynton and cut over to Warner Parrot that way, and so they're going to be cutting through the neighborhoods, and you're going to be getting calls requesting speed bumps. You mentioned the cost of congestion for freight, it's $2 a minute to sit in traffic. Um, and the other thing too is for me, for even myself, that current intersection is somewhat of a barrier when I walk, you know, I, because it's, it's a place I avoid when I'm walking. And so when you think about health, active transportation, trying to promote people, people to be more active, um, improving those intersections is a way to do that. The other piece too, um, you know, I'm very much safety-conscious in everything that I do, and, and, um, so safety is the thing first and foremost that I'd ask you to consider as you look at those options. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Did I pronounce your name correctly?
Yes.
Very good, thank you.
Uh, my name is Fred Juris, and I'm working with Betty Savage on this particular piece of property. And of course, our first choice would be alternative number one, and we'd like to save you $3,350,000, it would be helpful. However, on alternative number one, I would like to make one suggestion. On Central Point Road, there's a yellow bar down the middle, which I'm assuming is going to be a curb. If that were to happen, we'd like that to be a yellow stripe, with not a curb, so the trucks can have access to the lot. Just put a no-left-turn signal when the signal's above, so that's our first choice. Number four would be our second choice, because it gives us better access in and out to the left side of the parking lot, and a straight access out, out on Leland Road to the right. And our least popular one, of course, is the one that everyone likes so far, and that's the number five. But if you look at the left side on Central Point Road, uh, the axis, the way it's drawn off by the engineering firm, the angle is actually wrong if you're going to make a right-hand turn off of Central Point Road. And then, of course, there's only one way of access off of Leland Road. So our humble request is, as Wallace Engineering is doing more detailed analysis of the in and out of the mall, uh, we'd love to have a sit-down and a cup of coffee with Mr. Brokaw on occasion, maybe come up with some suggestions on how we could do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any more cards from any public comments. Anybody else?
You need, that's great, but just fill out a card for us, so we know who you are and we got you on record. Yeah, you can do it when you're done.
I came to listen, but I thought I should talk. I'm Ken Verhollen, and I own the property, the other, the only one that's left, I think, uh, the painting company. And my only concern is our vans coming from the turn, the turnabout down Leland Road, if we're going to be able to take a left into the property at all, if we move the driveway back from where it is now to the back of the property. I know you came into the office and talked to us a little bit about that, but I didn't know if this is my only chance to talk about it, and I actually also own the property on the other side. The Pregnancy Resource Center property. So I'm worried about the renters in those two properties being able to take a left. So I guess what I'm asking is, if we need to pull left into our property and there's a barrier there, are we supposed to go all the way down to the corner and pull into a driveway and turn around, or is there any plans for that? And I know we talked about it, but.
Right, right.
Haven't talked since. Overall, I think the turnabout is a great idea. Um, I used to do a lot of work off of Stafford Road, and that just totally solved the problem out there. I do, uh, see that it's going to be a problem for the mall, though, across the street, so I understand her concerns.
Yeah.
But as far as traffic flow goes, I think it's a great idea. So, those are my concerns. I always thought I'd bring them up, and I know we'll probably talk more about that if it goes through. Thank you.
Thank you.
Here's a form, and I guess I'll just, uh, say that it does seem like we have an option, at least, you know, what we talked about, of moving that driveway far enough to where we would still be able to allow that left turn in. So, and, you know, again, that's a detail that is down the road a little bit, um, although if we have a plan and we have a property owner that we can work with to make that kind of a transition early, we probably would work on those kind of things. That's again, where the plan kind of helps us to, um, move forward with, with those kinds of adjustments, you know, when, when the time is right.
May I ask a question, John?
Go ahead.
John, has there been any discussion about being able to do any staging on this, is in, say, doing a partial, uh, construction sometime early and then finishing it four, five, 10 years later?
You want to build a half-moon?
Yeah. Why not?
You just like to complicate things a little too much, Henry. Uh, no, I don't think we're, I mean, this is an all-or-nothing thing, I think, when we do it, um, we'll want to, you know, plan it appropriately. I, I, I mean, we haven't talked about that, but I'm, I'm just guessing that there's not a, there's not a alternative, but if there is something that you know about, Henry, you should let me know offline, so I don't look so stupid there, when you ask me about those kind of things.
Well, how, how does that work? Do you get into it and you just go sort of halfway around and then guess, or what?
When we're building a half-moon?
Yeah, yeah.
You launch.
Just follow the cones.
Gain speed.
Okay, well, I, do any of the other committee people have any comments?
Well, the comment I had is coming off of, the way it is now, coming off of Warner Parrot, and getting on Central Point and turning into that, uh, business there. If it's a truck, they block all the traffic, because if somebody's waiting to make a left turn on Central Point, head towards Warner Parrot, it's like everything is gridlocked. Nobody can move anywhere. Right now, there's no place for somebody to park stop. That's been a problem I've heard, I think we had some people here about a year ago talk about that, yeah.
Okay, let me ask Betty a question.
Go ahead, Bob.
Uh, Mrs. Savage, is there a possibility, or do you do it now, that, uh, you schedule those deliveries by those big trucks at, uh, at a time when traffic is down?
And please come forward for your answer, so they can get it on the recording.
What happens is I don't regulate the businesses. I lease to those businesses, Plaid Pantry, and right now, the deli that's there. And so I don't have really a say-so as far as when their deliveries are coming, but we, I had talked several years back when this whole five-corner intersection came about, and we went over it, and, uh, we discussed the fact that possibly that most of the larger trucks, which there are some big ones, because they're not going to bring a small truck in and just deliver to my unit or mall, um, space there. They load it up, and then they deliver from there onto the rest of them. So they're very large trucks, and he's, the gentleman who just spoke is absolutely right. When one comes and they stop, it does hold up traffic, and I'm quite concerned about that, I mean, I can understand that, but I don't have a jurisdiction over the time that they deliver. Uh, usually the head companies who are delivering schedule their routes, and I don't even think Plaid has that jurisdiction over them. We tried and asked them to do a certain hour, you know, way back when, and it didn't work out too good. So it's a case of, uh, the companies that deliver, and they're pretty big outfits, because they handle quite a bit of things in the Plaid, and the deli now too. So, sorry, I can't help you with that one.
I'd just like to say one thing to you, that I hope this will help with your tenants, that this is really truly a very long-term, out-there, quite-a-way's project. Uh, one thing, we have to try to figure out how we're going to get the money before we can do anything, and John referred to the transportation plan, and, uh, medium-term projects are like five to 10 years out. So I would hope that would help a little.
I hope it doesn't impact the cost anymore, because I'm your largest taxpayer there.
Well, then we want to keep you there.
So you want to keep me happy.
Yeah, yeah. I'm sure the city will, and, and the developers will work as closely as possible with you.
Yeah, we've worked very closely before, I think you can voice to that.
Oh, yes.
I mean, when we had the problem before, it was a, a major problem.
Yeah.
Didn't want to go that route with the city, but unfortunately, I had to, to protect, we had to protect our business, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. If there isn't anything else, I'll call this meeting adjourned.